All right. Good evening to everyone who has joined us online for our virtual town hall meeting. We are excited that you're here to engage with us, our school district on this important conversation. You can't necessarily see them all, but with us now are a number of our leadership team members. We're here and we're ready to hear your feedback and answer questions that you have about the facilities master plan and how it fits into the strategic plan and really at the end of the day, what it means for our community and for your scholars. My name is Leon Hendricks. I am the new executive director of communications and external affairs for the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and it is great to be back. And I say it's great to be back because this is a return to really my roots. I started as a preschooler in the Grand Rapids Public Schools a long time ago. I was in Congress Montessori, what was then known as Grand Rapids Montessori. Or excuse me, I was in Congress Montessori, what is now known as Grand Rapids Montessori. And my experience as a scholar here in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, I know had a tremendous impact on the man who I am today. I had a chance to go back to Congress Elementary School on the first day of school, and I was really struck by what I saw. I was so moved and impressed with the excitement and the maturity of our young scholars who were excited to get into the classroom and learn. It was heartwarming to see the parents who didn't just show up to drop off their kids, but they came inside. They wanted to see what the classrooms looked like and who the teachers were. They wanted to meet them and shake their hands. It really hit me as I looked at our scholars faces as they walked into the building, how important this work is. How failure is not an option. When we talk about education, we often talk about that every child deserves a quality education. And I'll take that a step further and say, we've got to give them a quality education, and we've also got to give them the best education we possibly can. We owe it to these young people. And that is what this conversation is all about and why we're bringing you here. We want to talk a little bit about how this is going to work. This is our first virtual town hall on this topic. So bear with us as we work together through this. At the bottom of your screen, or maybe it's at the top of your screen, you'll see a Q and A button. That is where you'll be able to engage with us. So we invite you there throughout the presentation, and we'll have a designated time at the end of the presentation to post your questions, and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Also, in that same format, you can post your feedback, and that information, we will be able to address some of it here live, but also take some of it back to the meetings and the decision-making tables as we continue to have this conversation with our community. I am excited that we have an amazing leadership team here, and a big part of that leadership team is the first presenter we'll hear from today, our deputy superintendent, Dr. Love Lady Mitchell. Dr. Brandy Love Lady Mitchell has dedicated her career to the pursuit of excellence in education, and we are honored to get to work alongside her and under her leadership within the Grand Rapids Public School. So right now, I'll turn things over to you, Dr. Brandy.
Thank you, Leon, and good evening, everyone. I'm delighted that you decided to join us tonight. I think it speaks to your investment in GRPS, and it speaks to your investment in our community's children. And I think Mr. Hendricks is going to drive the PowerPoint for me, so we're going to go to the next tile and even the one after that, because those pictures, I'll share this one with you, and then there's another one that I want to share with you. We have been having fun sharing pictures of us in our infancy. And so this particular picture, I believe, is an image of me from when I attended Congress. And the next image is of the basketball team that I was on at Ottawa Hills. And the reason why I selected both pictures is it just brings about fond memories of the days in which I walked the schools of GRPS. The Congress image certainly reminds me of my father and my begging him to allow me to walk to school and him following behind me in a big yellow van and later asking an older student to kind of watch out for me. And then, of course, the Ottawa Hills picture in terms of just show some of the connectedness of friendships and me learning what it means to be a role player on a team, and also how school helped bridge some opportunities for me. That's my story. And I think tonight really is about us thinking about your story and ultimately our story. So when I think about your story, it's, you know, maybe you are on the call because you're alum. Maybe you're on the call because you have a current child in GRPS. Maybe you have a future scholar that will attend GRPS. Nonetheless, I know that your story is some way intersecting with GRPS. And so our story for me is really about us imagining. So if you turn your eyes to the words on the screen, when you imagine a healthy, vibrant school building where your child is thriving, what do you picture? What do you picture? We're going to stay here for a second, because I shared a little bit about my story. I talked a little bit about you thinking about your story. And again, this is about you imagining our story, our story as connected to the future of GRPS. And I can't help but think about how mine again is anchored in the days that I spent at Congress and Ottawa Hills with thriving academics, when there were so many options for curriculum, because we had a full staff in a building, or how I got to experience educators collaborating, because there were a number of educators in one building and not having to mix and go to different buildings. Or like my image of the basketball team, how we had a vibrant feeder program in a dynasty related to athletics. In fact, I still joke about how if you wanted to make it to the state competition in any sport, you had to go through the city schools. You had to come through Creston and Ottawa and Union Central. You had to come through us. Those things, the things that made us a dynasty, or the things that made people put respect on our athletics and our productions that were unmatched, or the academics, is a little bit about why we're here. We want to make sure that we're positioning our staff and scholars and families and community to thrive and have opportunities. So the question again is, what do you imagine when you think of a healthy, vibrant school building? Next tile, please. So what I'm going to get into in terms of the what is really creating the GRPS facilities master plan. And the intention behind it is really trying to unpack some information and help you understand our story that is about reinvesting in scholars, revitalizing, and re-energizing. Hey, driver, can you slow down just a little bit? So we're going to stay here for a second, because one of the things that you're going to hear is that when we have extra space, it is more challenging to have those robust programs that I was describing, and it's more challenging to have some of the collaboration that happens between educators that tees scholars up to do their very best. So the why goes back to our healthy image of schools. The why is we want to re-engage, we want to revitalize, and we want to make sure we're pouring our resources into our scholars. And so the what really behind this is the master plan. So tonight, we're going to talk about the reality of having too many buildings, too much extra space, which is costing our district. So we'll explore some of the data to help you understand how we got to this point as well as the cost of staying in our current situation. We will reveal the process related to how we're going to embark upon making decisions when it comes to reducing the number of schools and share some things that we know already and some things that need to unfold yet. We're going to talk a little bit about the exciting things of enhancing and upgrading and revitalizing our schools, and we'll look at some more data just to help you understand some of the story across the state in terms of what other folks have done to best position us to engage in a process like this. Next tile, please. And so one of the things we want to do is anchor you in the school's vision for excellence. And for some of you, it may be the first time that you've seen this vision for excellence. So I'm going to deliberately pause and ask that you read through the lines on the screen and try to point out a couple of words and/or phrases that might jump out to you. Not that you're going to tell me them, but still, read and identify words and phrases that pop out to you, and you'll have your own record now. So let me give you about 30 seconds. And so some of you know that as a professional, this is about my fifth week as the deputy superintendent, but I've been in education for more than 20 years. And that statement in this vision for excellence that speaks to all GRPS scholars means something to educators, to our scholars and our families. It means that every one of our scholars deserves opportunities and vibrant buildings that tee them up for success. Success for life, success for school, and success for those tests that bridge them to opportunities. And so we're talking about every single one of our scholars. So all scholars jump out to me. The other phrase that jumps out to me is removing barriers. And so right now, our extra space is a barrier, because it is taking away resources that could be used in a different way to benefit our scholars more directly. And then that last phrase that jumps out for me is a sense of belonging. So it's so important that we are creating environments that demonstrate our respect for all scholars. And again, that's teeing them up for success. Those are the things that jump out to me. The vision for excellence is so important, because it's really anchored in equity. And we have heard through data and other resources that some folks feel like our theme schools gain more resources and have more traction than our comprehensive schools. And so this is also a way to ensure that we're meeting all scholars where they are and creating opportunities and excellence in all of our schools. Next tile, please. One of the things that I'm super excited about is the strategic plan, which serves in many ways as our lighthouse. And one of the reasons or things, variables that distinguishes GRPS's strategic plan from others is the robust community involvement that folks engaged in over the last several months. So we had over 1,300 respondents, but if you look to the right of the tile, you'll see some of the entities that were involved. And so what this is emphasizing is that it is not Dr. Roby's plan, our superintendent, whom, by the way, sends her love and regards and is apologetic about not being able to be here. It's not her plan. It's not my plan. It's not the folks you know at the local buildings' plan. This is our plan. This is our community's plan in order to build back a stronger, revitalize, and re-energize GRPS. Next tile, please. And so on our website, you'll see our strategic plan, and you can get into that a little more. But after analyzing all of the stakeholder input and incorporating the recommended changes, our Board of Education did a very brave thing and gave us clarity by adopting a set of priority outcomes, strategic themes, and objectives designed to attain our equity vision or our excellence, our vision for excellence. As you look at the tile, you are able to see those six priority student outcomes. And so I'll read those quickly. Increase literacy and proficiency, increase math proficiency. We know how critical these variables are for our students to be able to take advantage of co-secondary opportunities as well as to be a critical thinker in our world, so for life, school, and the test. Our data tells us that we need to continue to dig into reducing academic disparities for Black and Latinx students. Reduce Black students exclusionary discipline. So reducing the number of Black students who have been excluded from schools based on discipline. Increasing student empowerment, belonging, and agency, and most of us can agree that it is powerful to see an empowered student. And students typically can't learn at optimal levels without feeling like they're welcomed and belong. So I'm doing work around that. And then, last but not least, increasing successful transitions from high school to college and/or career. So everything that we're engaging in, including the facilities master plan, is tightly aligned to our strategic plan and specifically to our priority student outcomes. And as you dig into the strategic plan, you'll see that there are six strategic themes. The logos are on the right, and I'll read through and give a little rationale for each. Meet holistic scholar needs. So one of the things that COVID taught us plainly is that life is hard, and there has been an increase in depression and anxiety in school-age students in particular, and even in adults. And so we want to be very deliberate and intentional in addressing our students and their holistic needs, which will only tee them up to learn, to have joy, and to be that much more vibrant. Optimizing and value all school options. So I alluded to this earlier, related to every one of our schools need to be a top-tier option and teeing up our students to accomplish the things that we say they need to accomplish in order to continue to thrive and be whole and healthy. And so really attacking, whether it's the perceived thing or reality, really attacking and addressing what folks are calling a two-tiered or two-track system in addressing our comprehensive schools, so they have been bolstered, and so they are operating at a high level like folks know our theme schools to be operating at. Ensuring equitable access and outcomes is similar to that. Every scholar, every classroom, every day is poured into, and we're teeing them up for success, each and every one of them. Enhancing curriculum and program opportunities. And so when we talk about having extra space, it's difficult, more difficult to offer robust enrichment and strong curriculum and programs. And sometimes it's because teachers have to travel from school to school versus staying in the one building. Or, like I said before, I can remember my days at Ottawa Hills and some of the productions, and the music teacher was always right there, or the CTE teacher or the special or the elective courses. The teachers were always in that one building, and they didn't have to travel to multiple buildings, because the building was at full capacity. That gave us access, and it gave us wonderful programming and opportunities like the WIZ and the Junior Review and so many other wonderful things. Our kids in GRPS right now deserve that, and so do our staff. The last two bullets, cultivate and engage impactful, more diverse workforce. And so sometimes people see that, and they say, well, what are you trying to do? Research says that when we have an educator workforce that represents our student body as well as a diverse workforce, that all kids benefit, especially kids who don't normally see staff who look like them. And we're invested in building that muscle in all of our kids, so they are life-ready, ready to inherit this very diverse world that they have certainly, that they're certainly going to inherit, a much more diverse world. And then lastly, but not least, create a culture of trust, collaboration, and stewardship. And stewardship is the undercurrent of everything that we're talking about. We want to be good stewards, which means we have to look at this excess space and the amount of money that it's costing to stay like this and re-engage and reallocate the resources to our scholars, being good stewards. And so we are looking also at how do we serve as a good neighbor with some of our resources in this process. So you'll hear more. I believe this is my last tile for now. So I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Paul. Thank you, and I'll see you later in the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Love Lady Mitchell, and good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Wills, and I'm a partner with Platte Moran Crussa, and we're the real estate and capital projects group within Platte Moran. We do have the pleasure of working with over 30 of the top 50 school districts in the state of Michigan. On the first tile, after this, you'll see a picture of myself. I actually come from a family of educators. My father worked for an ISD. My mother was a teacher for 40 years. I have three siblings out of the seven of us that were teachers. My background is in architecture and master planning and urban and preservation. So that's a little bit about me. And we really want to talk about the scholars, because again, that's where it really starts with. So the next slide, one of the things you're going to see is, we went back in time, and thank you to Ms. Rhonda Cribs, who's the CFO. Back in 2000, the district had just under 27,000 students. So if you think back to the 2012 strategic plan implementation, that was really addressing the high school levels. What the facility master plan is really looking forward to is how do we address the elementary schools and middle schools? And you'll hear a little bit more about grade configuration cohorts. But when you go back in time, the district had 27,000 students at that time period. Next slide. If you take a look at the most recent enrollment, the district's somewhere between 13,000 and 14,000 students. As it relates to the excess space, as you can imagine, when you have a Roman drop of that size of nature, we found is there's about a million square feet of additional space. So how do districts really take a look at this? So on this slide, you're actually going back to 2008, again, pre-COVID, right after the Great Recession, the housing crashes of 2009, 910. But you see a stated decline, and you may ask yourself, why is this? So when you go back to the 2000 timeframe, the state of Michigan had about 2.2 million students in the K-12 arena. There's currently about 1.6 million, and that was really impacted by the birth rate decrease. So when you look at the state of Michigan in 1957, that was the height of the baby boomers. There was over 215,000 live births this past year. There's just over 100,000. So if you look at a lot of the school districts' ages within GRPS, they were built in the 50s, the 60s, and yes, we have some in the late 1900s, early 2000s. But you really take a look at that declining birth rate, and how is the district going to address that going forward? In 1994, you had Proposal A, which also created schools of choice options, including charter schools neighboring districts. I mentioned the COVID-19 pandemic, so again, the birth rate continues to be lower than what was anticipated. But however, GRPS and the Grand Rapids Greater Area is still a very attractable environment for families, for people coming out of college, relocations into the state of Michigan. So the Grand Rapids area actually still has very affordable, I'm sorry, a lot of housing needs, and it's causing the actual affordable housing crisis. So again, looking at the prices of housing accordingly. So these four things really kind of tie into the decreased enrollment projections. So is the trend expected to continue? Yes. When you look at the outgoing senior class as related to the incoming kindergarten classes, you can see that there's going to be a continuation decline. We do think it's starting to flatten out in the next three to five years, which gives the district really a five-to-10-to-15-year window of really planning from a facility master standpoint. This information actually was shared back with the board in 2019. We've also done routine updates in 2000, 2001. So I'm really proud of the district for taking this initiative to really incorporate a lot of the data points that you're hearing about today. So right now, if you take a look at GRPS's educational facilities, there's 42 of these facilities. There's also 17 non-instructional, so these would be such as the transportation facilities. This would be the administration offices, et cetera. And also, from a land acreage standpoint, there's about 720 acres of land that the GRPS currently owns and has to maintain. So there's some of those challenges that come with the properties. As again, if you look at your peers, so we've looked at the top 10 peer groups with GRPS, which would be Calum Zoo, Portage, Ann Arbor Schools, Wayne Westland, Plymouth Canton. They average about 160 to 170 square feet per person. GRPS is up in the 225 to 235 square foot range, which equates to roughly 1,000 square feet of additional space that's not needed. That also has to be maintained, and more importantly, has to be cleaned and operated on a regular basis. So the other thing we also looked at is how much does it cost to actually maintain that? So again, from a heating, cooling, you talk about cutting the grass, ensuring, testing. Right now, about $4 million a year is being spent on these excess facilities, which again, could be $4 million that could be reinvested back into the general fund, preserving programs and things of that nature. So again, what are some of the short terms? So again, as I mentioned, there's 17 non-instructional facilities. This facility master plan is more of a concept, so again, no decisions have been made. Once the board takes a look at this in November and adopts it in December, there'll be the implementation phase, which will start in January. So really, the short term is how do you lower the operational costs of the district quickly and effectively? Looking at program preservation, if you talk to and look at the hiring, there's actually over 200 open positions for teaching and administrators. So again, those staff would move with students and programmings. But the ultimate goal is how do we reinvest that $4 million? And as Dr. Love Lady Mitchell mentions, how do we revitalize, revitalize schools? How to re-engage the community? How do we reinvest and reimagine what GRPS schools could be? Next slide. So this, I'm going to turn back over to Dr. Love Lady Mitchell.
Thank you. So what I want to do now is talk a little more about the how, the how related to the process. And so bear with me a second. Next tile, please. And so some of these presentations have helped us understand, you know, some of the information that's out there, what we know as well as what we need to know yet. And so what we know right now for sure, and this is an iterative process, which means that we are going to continue to seek out your feedback and adjust as we need to, to stay transparent and to make sure that this stays relevant. We know we need to close schools. We know that for sure. We know we won't close high schools. Years ago, and not that long ago, GRPS engaged in the transformation plan, which helped us revitalize and design healthier high schools. And so we're not touching high schools. We know transparency and decision-making matters, and so just like we're coming to you right now through Zoom, we have several more town hall meetings, and then we will continue throughout the whole process, which it is a multi-year process. We will continue to be transparent in what we're finding out and sharing decisions that are being made. We also know realistically that this may cause some worry and/or anxiety. And so we're going to do our best at continuing to try to So what we're learning, so as I said, we don't know which buildings. So we're still trying to take in information and assess all of that. One of the things that was asked before is, we do not foresee shutting down or closing programs, but it may be a program is at a different site. We do not know. What we're learning, we're learning to try to develop a precise plan as we go forward in terms of a timeline. And in the next couple tiles, I'll show you some of the years that we see certain things being disclosed. But because we are trying to make this an iterative process, we can get tighter on our timeline. What we know for sure is that our scholars are at the center of all of our decisions. Everything that we do is tethered to making it a better experience and system for our scholars. We know that we continue to take in different individual program needs to see what they need and what would help us continue to have robust programs. One of the things that we're learning is about the team configuration, GRPS team configuration. And what I think this particular bullet point is saying is, when our staff are in the same building and able to collaborate and synthesize information, our scholars thrive and win academically as well as socially and emotionally, and so do our adults. The other configuration that's being worked through is related to some schools are pre-K through 5, and then there are other configurations where some schools go all the way from beginning through eighth grade. And so there are variations to some of the grade bands that we have, and so we're continuing to learn about that as well as continuing to think about the ways in which we're measuring success. Next tile, please. So the way that we want to continue to connect and engage community is through our town hall meetings. And I want to say And I want to say that we've had at least three town hall meetings, and this is the first one on Zoom, but we will have more. On our website, you'll see a list of all the dates and the times and the locations. So check that out. We are working out ways of engaging scholar voice. It says surveys and we are. Committed to collecting the information in a way that is friendly and relevant to our scholars depending on their age. There's a public survey that folks can complete by going to GRPS.org. And we also are engaging in lunch and learns with community entities to collect their voice and to help us in our co-construction. As usual, on Monday evenings, we have our board meetings where folks are more than free to attend and share there and or just continue to stay informed by attending those meetings. And as I've said, if you go to our website, the GRPS board meetings as well as some other information is on that website. And the last but not least, another way to connect is by using the email address that you see on the tile. Next tile, please. Earlier in the presentation, I talked about a timeline and there are dates that we know. And there are dates that will be revealed as we go on. And so this tile speaks a little bit to that. Our board will consider feedback before approving a facilities master plan by the end of the calendar year. Schools will not be named until twenty twenty three or later. Because this is an iterative process and we're taking in data. Next tile, please. Implementation will be phased in over a period of years. So changes to open schools will not occur before twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. So if a school is open right now, changes wouldn't happen to that current school that's open until twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. There will be opportunities to engage and twenty twenty three and beyond is something that we want to stress because because it is an iterative process and we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to shape how things are unfolding. And the way that we will continue to make decisions is through a process that our board went through. It's called the values based decision making process. And basically, my metaphor is that this in many ways is our lighthouse. This helps us understand how we want to make decisions and what we want to keep central and making those decisions. So the first one is given we as a community have a strategic plan. Where we had so many different stakeholders engaged, we want to make sure what we do is aligned with the strategic plan. Because you told us what you wanted to see and what you wanted to do, and it's all captured in that strategic plan. Next, is it invest in educational spaces and scholar opportunities? So we want to make sure whatever we do is again, creating spaces that tee up optimal learning and engagement and welcoming atmospheres that create opportunity for our scholars. Third, results in equitable outcomes. And so we want every student to have an opportunity to benefit, to thrive and to meet the outcomes that we talked about earlier. So equity is about meeting people where they are. Prioritizing property for community benefit. So what this might sound like and look like is we talked earlier about the great resignation that's happening throughout the globe, certainly in the United States. And so we have seen huge vacancies in the field of education. And so one of the ideas or concepts that has been talked about is there's a housing crisis in our region. And so might a viable option be to use some of our property as incentive housing for teachers? So maybe a space that we have is a housing unit or more than one housing unit for our teachers. Or maybe it's green space, whatever the need is in the community, having conversations and dialogue about how do we create something that benefits our community? And last but not least, in the values based decision making is makes a positive financial impact. So we can use the dollars to reinvest and reengage on behalf of our students. And so with that being said, I am, oh, there's one more. I'm sorry. I tried to get out of here, but I think there's one more and then I'll turn it one or two more and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Hendricks. So our commitment related to this process and beyond is we will keep scholar success central in every decision. We will keep scholar success central in every decision that we make. We will conduct this process in a transparent way that involves the voices of our staff, scholars and our community. And last but not least, we will emerge from this as a stronger, more vibrant school district. Who has rich history in this community and is one of this region's largest employers. And so that is our commitment to you. Mr. Hendricks, you want to take it over?
Thank you, Dr. Love Lady Mitchell. And I think if we were all in the room together, I hope we would get a round of applause for you. Your clarity in communicating this is such a value add to our district. And your passion for for the young people that we are serving here in Grand Rapids just shines through. So we appreciate your dedication to this process and this town hall and communication today. Also, big thanks to you, Paul. Wills from Plant Moran, they have really helped steer the ship on this. And you know, the it was decided early on that we wanted some outside help with this and really make this, bring in a third party that could really look at this with a clean vision about what we needed to do and with the experience of having done this at other school districts. So Paul, thank you for your presentation as well. We do want to get now to some of your questions and we invite you to continue to place them into the Q and A window. If you don't have the Q and A window up, I believe you can click on it on the top or bottom of your screen. It says Q and A, and that is where you can type your questions. I want to first address, we've gotten a few questions in here about communication that we had to put out shortly before this meeting. Incident that involves a potential weapon at one of our schools. While that is not the central topic of this conversation, we recognize that when it comes to scholar safety, that is always has been and always will be our top priority. So we do want to address that with those who are a part of this meeting. On the call with us is our Chief of Staff and Executive Director of Public Safety and School Security. He says years of securing schools and he and I have partnered together in communicating and working on this today. Mr. Larry Johnson, I want to invite you to address that issue for those who are asking about it on the call today.
Thank you, Leon. And I know that's I'll try to be as brief so we can get back to, you know, the intended topic, but I know this is a very critically serious topic for our parents tonight. We did send out a very extensive communication to the families and scholars who attend Innovation Central High School as well as Grand Rapids Montessori. We have received some rumored information and in the interest of time, we wish we could have been much more swifter in our response, but we wanted to be prudent and make sure that we have the right information. As the information came in late afternoon on Monday, and we worked throughout the night and early morning to try to confirm some of the information. And as much as we are confident, we believe we had an apparent weapon inside of the building. That weapon was not seen by any adult, but reported by at least two students. And we've identified who we believe was responsible for that. And we are implementing our disciplinary processes while working with local law enforcement to see if there is any anything else that can be done to help us address this. We will continue to work with our scholars and our families and listen to their concerns and how we responded in order to ensure that we can get better in those responses in the future. Thank you for your patience and the opportunity to discuss this just very briefly tonight.
All right. Thank you, Larry. And it's important to note in this process, whereas in many of the things we deal with, there is an incident that's happening and we're in the process of dealing with the communications as it unfolds. This was quite different in that we became aware of this occurrence well after the the incident happened in the school bathroom where we believe this this weapon was presented. So trying to investigate backwards was our challenge and then getting enough information to where we could communicate with parents and communicate with our staff was a key portion of this. So thank you for your questions about that. We'll get back to the topic that we are all here for. We got a question from Ruth. She's asking, is there a school by school list of occupancy percentages available? I'll bring in Paul to answer this question. Paul, I know that you all, we've shared some of our data, but you all have taken a real deep dive into the numbers in our school district. Go ahead and I'll let you touch on that, Paul.
Thanks, Mr. Hendricks. Yes, to answer your question, there is a school by school utilization. This was presented at a board work session in December of twenty twenty. Also, an updated board work session in May of this past year, which is really the impetus of understanding that the situation is not changing. So I don't know if that'd be up on the district's website relative to board presentations, or if there's something more specifically. If you could put your email address in there, we could potentially link you up to the district's information. But yeah, both of these were presented at a board work session for public information cancellation, so.
Okay, thank you, Paul. This one I will toss to you, Dr. Love Lady Mitchell. It is a question about process here. Caitlin is asking, will families have the opportunity to give input on what programs are provided to scholars from those reused finances? I'm assuming they mean when we are able to get our district to the appropriate size and we save some money because of that. Will the community have some input on how those dollars are used?
The way that we're collecting data right now that might help us best in terms of informing programs and services and buildings is through the survey and through the town hall meetings. And that may look even different as we get into the next iterations of this process. That's the best answer that I have now. Mr. Hendricks, I would ask that you add on, expound on that if if you feel like you can and want to.
Sure, yes. I think the answer to the question is yes, our families will be, as we move through this process and we talk about the savings and what we do with the property we have that is not needed for educational space. We will be continuing to engage with the community. This is just an example of how the Grand Rapids Public Schools is going to be doing business. Our community has made it clear to us that they don't want us to make a plan and present it. They want to be a part of the plan. They want to, for lack of a better term, see how the sausage is made. So that is really where we are. And some of you may be asking yourselves, well, why don't, you know, why isn't there more meat on the bones? Why don't we have more information? Well, that's because we are really at the ground level of these plans. We've not made of, there's no secret list of schools that we're looking at. There's no plan that has already been hatched. We are trying to create that now and we want a need to hear the community's voice. We've gotten a few questions about what are the attendance levels at each school? And we want to make, I think it's important to make clear that this isn't something where we're going to come in and say the lowest attended schools are the ones that are going to be cut. That is not how these decisions are going to be made. We recognize that our schools need to be placed strategically. Our, we want our communities to have a school that is accessible to them. That is very important to us. So it is not simply a numbers game of trying to, you know, eliminate the smallest schools that we have. That is not how this process is going to work. Got another question teed up here, and I think it's a good one. Let me find where it went now. It says. Okay, it says even with the excess space, action access shouldn't be inhibited through consolidation. Also, enrollment may rise in the future. Why not improve buildings by consolidating temporarily and improve empty buildings until each building is higher quality and we have space in the future? So that's a good question because certainly it is our hope and our continued effort to A retain the scholars that we have that have entrusted us with their education, but also to attract more into our district. How are we going to make sure that we're keeping that space for growth? Paul, I'll let you talk about that a little bit.
Thanks, Mr. Hendricks. It is a great question. So again, when you go from twenty seven thousand students to roughly thirteen or fourteen thousand students. That again, kind of equates about a million, million square feet. So you'll realize we're not going to two million square feet of reduction because one of the things the district does reserve is and wants to preserve is actually the ability to grow. So one of the recommendations of the facility master plan is to potentially have your schools at roughly eighty to eighty five percent utilized, which would allow growth for the future. Also, the cost for improvement. So the other thing that the district did was update their tenure capital plan. When you take a look at the forty two facilities plus seventeen support facilities, that's over four hundred and fifty million dollars of capital need. And so again, by realigning the district programs in the buildings and help that utilization piece, it's also going to reduce the district's capital needs to rely on potentially unutilized facilities. So again, it's really a two-part question. Mr. Hendricks is right. So the district's been very, very purposeful about not having a hundred percent utilization of these facilities. They do want that flexibility. And again, the district has taken a good look at their tenure capital plan. And those are some of the, I'll call it the parameters that the district will look at in terms of looking at facilities. The other is, you know, size of property. Some may say, well, it's a small site. We can't expand. That must be the one that gets, you know, potentially relocated or consolidated. That's all to be determined. As Mr. Hendrick said and Dr. Lovely Mitchell, right now it's more about gaining insight from the community through these town halls, through the surveys, through the buildings themselves and different community members. Really to help frame that conversation. So again, it's a multi, multi-year ritter and process. And again, one of the things you'll see is again, trying to really realign that four million square feet appropriately and also allow for future growth to hopefully answer Mr. Green's question there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wills. This next question I think might be best for Larry Johnson, our Chief of Staff. Larry, the question is, how many empty buildings does GRPS currently maintain? How many of our buildings are actually empty?
Buildings that we actually have most students or programming in is two. Some of our buildings that we're not utilizing for our scholars are being utilized by the intermediate school district. But the actual total empty buildings, it's two.
Thank you. I see another question here from Jerry that says you can't house all of the kids now. So what is your plan? And I can take a swing at that one. I think you might be conflating some of the stories here. Certainly, our issue has not been housing any of the students. We have, as we said here, more than enough space. What you have also heard us talking about is our staffing needs. And we do have a shortage of teachers, a shortage of other staff. So we do want to invite you and your friends to check out our careers page at GRPS.org. We're looking and we are hiring now. So while we have plenty of room to house students, a classroom doesn't do us a whole lot of good if we don't have teachers to staff those classrooms and to use that space to pour into our students. So we do have a shortage in teachers. I think that's my, that might be what you are talking about there. Let's go back to some other questions. And I will bring in Paul to answer this question. This question's from Debbie. She says, what values and metrics other than the age of the building might be used in considering which schools we ultimately keep open?
That is a great question. So some of it is the ability to be actually to actually expand on the site. What is the capital needs for that particular building? Some other things might be the utility costs. So again, some of the older facilities that maybe are decent utilization, but are again operationally inefficient. We're also looking at transportation. So again, trying to either improve or maintain the existing transportation routes, walkability to schools. Also, what what schools are able to accommodate which programs? So again, it's very easy to you know, kind of interchange a K five between a K six and a K five school. Understanding where pre K is at with the district as a whole. So there's a lot of different factors. Not just the age of facility utilization. So you know, roughly six to seven different metrics. Again, this was kind of shared with the board as just some examples. Again, nothing's been adopted yet. That'll be part of that facility master plan of you know, because I see a lot of questions like, well, how do you not have specifics in the facility master plan? Really, facility master plan is very much like the strategic plan. What you have is conceptual goals and opportunities. And then obviously, what that once adopted, that's where you start going through that ritter process that Dr. Lovely Mitchell talked about of going building by building, program by program. that's where you start going through that ritter process that Dr. Lovely Mitchell talked about of going building by building, program by program. Really with the lens of these guardrails, you know, of the metrics going forward. So again, not just straight utilization, not just enrollment, but a whole plethora of information relative to facilities from a data, from a data standpoint.
All right, Mr. Wells, thank you. The next question is from Jolanda or Yolanda. She says, could non-instructional properties be closed or sold before 2024? We would really need to go slowly making a decision to close schools. But if we are spending so much unnecessary money on buildings and have so many non-instructional buildings, it seems those could be offloaded sooner, couldn't they? I'm looking for one of y'all to raise your hands. Is that Paul? Okay.
No, actually, Mr. Hendrickson, that's actually a great question. That is, that is one of the things that if you looked at the survey, and again, the survey is just one component of input, but really asking, you know, what do you do with underutilized or non-utilized facilities? As Mr. Johnson said, you have two facilities right now. You know, again, how do you lower the operational costs? Maybe it's a demolish of the facility and you hold a property in perpetuity. Right now, the city actually is going through a, a facility master plan as well. So how do you dovetail what GRPS is doing with the city? So there's a lot of great ideas and informations coming out of it. We see a lot of peer districts do that where you have two or three facilities that are not used for the last five or six years. Those, those do tend to come off very quickly. Again, you're not relocating programs immediately and things of that nature. Kind of going forward. So yeah, that would be something that would be definitely consideration for a facility master plan for, I'll call it the very short-term goals and objectives.
Okay, Susan, it looks like Susan and Ken here have a really good question. They're asking, how did we get into this situation, having the space being so much greater than the number of students that we have? How did we get into this situation? And I'll go to, to, to Larry on this one. Mr. Johnson, our chief of staff has been with the school district for quite a number of years and has watched our district change in terms of its footprint. How can we take a swing at that question, Mr. Johnson? How did we get to this point?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrickson. Thanks for the question. It, it is a multitude of factors and I think Mr. Willis has, has alluded to some of those factors. But the declining birth rates across the country surely has impacted us here in Michigan. The job markets switch here in Michigan where we have individuals moving out of West Michigan. COVID did not help us at all. And then there's, parents have, have a trace and options to look at other educational opportunities for their kids. So it's, it's almost the perfect storm for us and with a multitude of factors over many years that we, we find ourselves coming to this point. Once again, where we have to look at, looking at our building stock to see what we must do to reduce that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Dr. Love Lady Mitchell, I'll tee you up for this next question here. It's a relatively simple one. Chelsea simply wants to know, when will it be decided what schools are going to close? When will it be decided what schools are going to be closed? We may not have a connection there with Dr. Love Lady Mitchell. I'll take a swing at that, at that question. So.
Sorry, I was having a hard time. I was looking at the chat. Schools, schools will, will not be named until 2023 or later. Is that what you're wondering? Schools will not be named until 2023 or later. Changes to open schools will not occur before 2024, 2025. So 2023 is when we hope to name schools or list schools.
We certainly, we do expect that there will be some action taken by the Board of Education before the end of this year as far as adopting the framework for this facility's master plan. So that will happen before the end of this year, but that will not include naming, actually deciding which schools are going to, to ultimately close as a result of that. And of course, your feedback, the feedback that you give us and the surveys that you can find live now at GRPS.org. The feedback we're hearing during these town halls are all going to be factors in making those decisions. Of course, along with the help of our consultants who are helping us crunch the numbers. And of course, just the, the work of the administration and the school board are all going to be a part of making these decisions. Steph is asking, can you talk about how transportation changes are being considered along with these changes to facilities? To ensure that there's access to youth who might have a new commute because of some school closures. Our chief of staff, Larry Johnson oversees the transportation for the district in partnership with Dean Transportation, outside agency that actually does the work on the ground for us. Larry, can you take a swing at that question, talking about how the transportation changes might be impacted here? If our district's footprint changes?
Yeah, we've, we've had this conversation and we believe that as, as the footprint change, we're hoping to streamline routes and make the transportation more efficient in terms of moving our scholars around. We believe that the, as we are so spread out currently, that it creates some, with other, with other concerns, it creates some challenges for us. Surely working with, with the vendor that provides transportation services deans. So we, we are hoping that, and as we evaluate this, we believe that some of these streamlined routes would be more efficient and, and will service our families somewhat effectively as the kids enter to or from school.
Okay, this question, we, we, we do have on the line here, our executive director of athletics, Mr. Kirk Johnson. And this question is about athletics. Along with providing a safe and engaging learning environment for the students, is there a plan to elevate the athletics facilities and programming in the schools that remain a part of our school district?
Yes, Kirk Johnson here, absolutely. And so part of the, the facilities master plan, there's a component that speaks about reinvestment and reinvestment in programming. And so taking a look at what programs are thriving and what programs students are actually interested in and being able to develop that. Because, you know, additional resources would take, would, would be needed to enhance those programs. And so looking at how we can, can be more effective and efficient with and responsible with school funding would allow us to explore the options on expanding and enhancing athletic programs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. This next question, I'm going to direct toward Roxana. Roxana, I'll first let you introduce yourself to many people who may not know you as part of the school district because you recently joined. But this is a question specifically aimed at your expertise. How will the needs of special education students who are currently in the programs embedded in smaller schools be addressed and prioritized?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roxana Alahi. I'm new alongside of Mr. Hendrickson, Dr. Brand, Brandy Lovely Mitchell, and serving in the role of executive director for special education in section 504. So the question that you raise is a really good one. And we know that when we think about all of our scholars' needs, and particularly focusing on the, the needs of scholars with disabilities, we want to be very intentional about how we make those decisions. The spaces that have been created for them now are very intentional with putting in, in place the supports that they need in that environment. And so if changes are necessary based on our overall plan, we are going to again be very intentional about making sure that that space is adequate for their needs, that the environment supports and is designed specifically for that. So again, those decisions will be made as a part of a larger plan and thinking that through together. But also making sure that we are very intentional with identifying what our scholars need based on their disabilities and how we can adequately do that, keeping that in the forefront of our decision-making.
All right. Thank you. This next question comes from Vikiya. She says, will they cut, cut the after-school programs? And will the school food provided for the children change? I can take a swing at that question. I think largely the answer will be no, and I think we'll see improvements on both, both fronts once we are able to make these changes and I'll explain why. After-school programs, as they are spread out now among so many of school buildings are very difficult to manage and staff. Once we are able to change the size of our district footprint, bring our school buildings into robust and more full learning environments, we will be able to have those staff members have the redundancies we need. So we don't have to see the cancellations if we know that many of you have bear with us as we've had to cancel some after-school programming because of staffing challenges. So this consolidation is going to bring us to be able to function at a higher level when it comes to special services for our scholar. The same is true for our food service and same is true for our secretarial staff and our custodial staff. Right now, they are all stretched quite thin. They are taking care of business in a lot of buildings. Whereas we're excited about the possibility of bringing some of those folks together. We think it's going to improve service for our school district and our scholars. We know that iron sharpens iron. So when we have, we have school buildings right now where we have one second grade teacher or we have a teacher teaching a split, second and third grade. We know that those are not the optimal environments. We want our teachers, many of them are young teachers, excited to be engaging and learning and improving their craft as we grow our school district. So many of them are continuing to, to grow as they are working with us. So we want to make sure that those teachers have each other to lean on, have that camaraderie. And we believe that that will be one of the, one of the many positive outcomes of making the changes that we see coming as a part of the facilities master plan. This question is from DSJ. That person says, will the older buildings in the district be closed first? Due to how old and outdated they are. We've had a lot of conversations around that. I see Paul just flickered his camera back on. Maybe that means he wants to take a swing.
No, thanks, Mr. Hendrickson. And obviously it's one factor, but no, it's, it's interesting. When we've done this for multiple of other districts, you know, typically age is just one component of it. So again, what you'll find is some of the older buildings are actually more construct, more like, more sound, if you will. There may be some buildings in the 50s, 60s. So again, age has one component to it. But at the end of the day, it's just one factor of the multitude that'll go into the ultimate decision factors. So.
This next question is from Jennifer and I think our chief of staff, Larry Johnson, will be a great person to answer this. She says, I understand there are no final, final decisions that are set in place, but with many security upgrades and other renovations planned, it would be helpful to strategically funnel financial resources into those buildings that we will keep and avoid pouring money into those we are likely to not keep or sell. Larry?
Well, we've been, we've been very intentional about upgrading our security footprint in all of our buildings. And, and we realize that there's a decision that's going to be made down the road to reduce some of the footprint. But one thing we won't do is compromise on security. And we still have to maintain the level of security in those buildings and continue to look at the resources and the, and the, the products that will help keep our, our children safe. In our selection of products, we are looking at products that we can reutilize in a building if we were to close a building. But we will continue to invest in, in security upgrades to make sure that while the buildings are occupied by scholars and staff, that they are in the, in the, in the most, the safest possible environment that they can be in.
Yeah, I don't think we can be more emphatic about that. We are not going to take shortcuts when it comes to the health and safety of our scholars. Whether in, as long as our scholars are going to those buildings, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that they are as safe as possible. So that's not even really a consideration when we're talking about safety upgrades. If scholars are in there, we're going to make sure, no matter the cost, to make sure that the schools are secure and safe. Angela is asking a process question here about when we might release the results of the survey. We've got the survey online now at GRPS.org. We invite everybody who's listening to take it. Please invite your friends who are part of our community to take it as well. They want to know when we might release the results of those survey, surveys. Our plant Moran is handling those surveys for us. So I will invite Mr. Wills to talk about when we might come forward with those results.
Thanks, Mr. Hendricks. And as we mentioned, the surveys went live on September 1st. We are targeting a mid, mid-October completions, about six weeks from that perspective. And then we'll report up to the board at the October, late October board workshop. Then ultimately, any final survey results would be shared in that early November board time. So keep a, keep tuned. And again, on the district's website is the board meeting dates and times, locations. So that can give you an idea of the timeline for the survey itself.
Okay, we got a, a question here from Katie. She says, I am concerned that reducing buildings and removing neighborhood schools options will result in fewer GRPS students as they move to other non-public options. Like many GRPS parents, I greatly value the neighborhood location of my school. If our school closed, we would be forced to consider the private or charter school in our neighborhood. Are you at all concerned about losing children on count day and their resulting dollars as schools of neighborhood choices are lost? I am, Katie says. Dr. Love Lady Mitchell, can you weigh in that, on that? And I can help as well with that question. Just the concern about neighborhood schools, whether if we do see some of those closes as a result of this plan, how that might impact our ability to retain and attract students moving forward?
It's a great question. And I think the question is being played out now in terms of people have other options. And perhaps some of the design of what we do will cause them to look in other places. But what we're really putting our money on based on the engagement of the community is that you will have a compelling reason to stay in a GRPS school because we know that this is going to be designed to one-center scholars and bolster our programs and our schooling experiences. And so we're hoping as we co-construct this, that this is something that you're excited about and anticipating unfolding that while you will have other options because they exist now, that the best option will be for you to stay in GRPS. For the reasons that we've kind of talked about before and ultimately because we're hoping that this just makes us stronger and better. And if your kiddo is with us, we for sure know that it will be. So we're, we're just hoping that the design is something so compelling that while you'll have other options, you'll want to stay. I think leaving or losing students or staff even is always a risk. We just want to create an opportunity and experience that while you have that option, you elect not to do that.
Right. And, and I think one of the ways that we can make sure we're doing that is by investing every dollar we can into our scholars. And that is what we know our community wants. We know that that is what's going, or, or what is going to make our schools as robust and competitive in this market as they can possibly be. Imagine what we are going to be able to do when we look at saving millions and millions of dollars every year and that we can direct those funds into making the buildings we do need the best they can possibly be and making the programs that we, that we have the strongest they can possibly be. Where we have art teachers who are able to be dedicated to their school building, performance arts that we're able to use within, within a building instead of having multiple buildings come together i- in the way that we do now for many of our programs. So we believe that we will be stronger and more attractive as we work our way through this process. And we know that our community isn't going to tolerate anything less. That's a, a big reason why we are engaging the voices of all of you as we move through this process. Because we know that together we will be able to make schools as the strongest when we put our minds together. Just so you all know, we're going to take questions for another 10 minutes here. We have a lot of them here and, and we're, we are definitely going to be going through the feedback we see here. And if you have questions that you're putting in now, we, we are working our way through a list. If you care to, feel free to leave an email address with your question. And we will respond to those that we don't get a chance to address here in this meeting. So putting your question here, even if we don't get to it live here, we will be going through them, reading those comments, taking that feedback and digesting it as we move through this process. One of the questions here, if school- One of the questions here, if schools are closed or combined, will teaching staff of the closed buildings have the choice to be placed together? If schools are closed and combined, will teaching staff of the closed buildings have the choice of being placed together? Mr. Johnson, our Chief of Staff, having been through some of this, how have we worked with that in the past? That might be an indication of how we've moved forward.
Yeah, the, the teacher's contract helps us to decide who gets placed where. And we absolutely work with, with our unions to ensure that we're following the contract and the, and placement of teachers as they bid out for those positions. So that's, that's all guided by some structural things that are in the teacher's contract in terms of teacher placement.
I also wonder if Ms. Lusk might want to jump in on that?
Anya Lusk is our Assistant Superintendent and our Chief Counsel for the School District as well as the, in charge of our human resources. So yeah, Ms. Lusk, please weigh in on this.
Yeah, absolutely. So Mr. Johnson has, has the right end of it. He, he was absolutely correct in what he said. In addition, you know, first is a little bit too soon to tell, though we know we'll do our, our, our best. But it really depends, you know, ultimately, in the end, how many schools we end up closing? How many teachers are at those schools? I'm afraid it's a little too soon to tell exactly what we, we might be doing when the time comes.
Okay, next question here from Julia. She's, has a question about our older school buildings. And this one, I think, Mr. Johnson, another one would be good for you because I know you've addressed some of the public statements and the, the concern around asbestos she's asking about. Do the older buildings have asbestos in them? Will there be added costs and demolition of those buildings in order to safely remove the asbestos that might be still in them? Do you know how that works, Mr. Johnson, when we talk about demolition?
Yes, we work with our, we work with our, you know, facilities and operations folks and Paul can jump in surely. And anytime a, a facility is, is torn down, there is an asbestos abatement process that takes place to assure that there is no asbestos there. And then if it is, it is mediated properly and with, with the confines of the law to assure that we are following all those, those laws. And so you, we just don't know until we get into the buildings. Surely if a building is an older building, some of that has already been mediated. But when you start really digging into the, and tearing down and demolition, the demolition of a building, there could still be some levels of asbestos left. And, but it will be remediated prior to removal or demolition of a building. Paul, I don't know if you want to jump in on that from.
No, Mr. Johnson, that was spot on. Again, the demolition costs are incorporated in certain scenarios. Again, kind of elementary level, middle school, high school level. Again, out of our 30 out of 50 largest districts, a lot of them have done this type of process. So as Mr. Johnson said, there are guidelines, both by the state and local authorities, which are followed accordingly. So that's a great question.
All right, thank you, Paul. Dr. Midal Gunnel, I want to bring you in on this one because this is, this is a question that is certainly important and top of mind when we talk about our students, our valued scholars who come to us from other countries, many of them learning English as a second language. This question is from Ann. She says, how are we engaging all of our families who have refugee status or only speak non-English? I do not want to see this rather large population lose their voice when it comes to this matter. That has been key to us. You may have noticed on this call, there are translators available for the, for all of the, for, for multiple languages that are, are leading languages that are spoken within this school district. Our survey you will see can be translated into multiple languages. Dr. Gunnel, can you weigh in on that?
And thank you for that question. That's a great question. Just like you said, Leon, we have interpreters and we translate everything that we do, including the surveys. And also, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting today with some of the cabinet members on how to engage all of our Black and Brown students, scholars, including immigrants and refugees, right? So we have a plan to bring in more parents and scholars at, at the elementary level, middle school and secondary level, high school level. So we're working that, on that very, we have a very intentional plan that we're going to present to Cabinet. And I thank you for asking that question.
And for those of you who've heard us talk about Cabinet, when we say Cabinet here, that is our top leadership here in the school district. So the principals in our school be, board, excuse me, the principals in our buildings report to our cabinet members and our cabinet members are in charge of various critical operations within the school district. You just heard from Dr. Midal Gunnel. She is the Executive Director over our English as a Second Language Programs. And she oversees quite a few other things that I don't, I'm not going to try to list them.
Now, that's okay. And I just want to assure you that we are working on it and we will make, we are very intentional about that. And thank you for asking that question.
Yes, and I'm going to bring in Paul Wills to talk about this too. Because we are actually monitoring in real time when it comes to our survey, who is responding, because that is so important to us. Paul, can you talk a little bit about that because you've been leading that effort?
No, sure. Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. So yeah, again, the survey is just one small component. As mentioned, you know, how do you get to the building levels? How do you get to those individual families, individual guardians, scholars, parents, teachers, et cetera? So the district's been very purposeful. Right now, we have over 1,100 respondents on the survey. So it's been up for just over two and a half, three weeks. Again, it's going for another three weeks. So again, that's just one small component. So again, we actually look at by quadrant within the city. We're looking at the socioeconomic breakdowns of like, for instance, who's not necessarily responding to the survey and then working with the district, the executive team and the cabinet to make sure that those other efforts are very similar to the strategic plan, which was very successful in getting a wide swath of information to really marry up to, to what the student scholars looks like as well as community for GRPS. So appreciate the mispronounces.
Sure, this question is definitely for you, Mr. Johnson, our, our Chief of Staff and Executive Director of Public Safety and School Security. It's about busing. Will busing still be outsourced to Dean Transportation going forward? Will the district manage their own buses? And this person expresses some concern and frustration. She says, the busing is consistently late and unreliable. If schools close, more transportation is going to be necessary. How will we manage this?
Well, the, the decision to outsource busing is absolutely a decision by the Board of Education. It's not really a question that, that I can answer tonight, unfortunately. But as it relates to the quality of the service of the bus currently, we, we are listening to parents right now and, and working very hard with, with Dean's Transportation to improve the level of service based on the complaints and the concerns that we're getting from our parents. But, but the overall decision to outsource is a decision of the, the Board of Education.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much. And a huge thank you to our entire leadership team who has been on this call and listening and hearing some of the feedback. We also are all seeing the comments and questions that are being delivered to us in the chat. All of that is being received and digested by us. So we thank you so much for that. We are going to bring this event to a close, but this is far from the last event that we are having and the last opportunity. We invite any of you on this call who are interested to come to our remaining town hall meetings. We have several of them left. Some of them will be led in Spanish. There's another virtual option available. We'd love to meet you in person if you'd like to come and, and talk with us face to face. All of that is available in the, the Facilities Master Plan section of GRPS.org. GRPS.org, it's right on the top of the page because we want everyone to be able to find it easily. Just click that, you'll see access to our town hall, access to our facilities, master plans with the videos we've produced to, to explain this that go into even more detail than we've been able to go into here today. So there's plenty of opportunity for you to engage. We're going to continue going through the comments, but we want you to know that we're far from done. Also, our, our school board, of course, it weighs in hugely as far as the decisions on this. They are the, the ones that have been elected by those who are living in the Grand Rapids community. They want to hear your voice as well. We invite you to attend the school board meetings that take place twice a month. Every other Monday they take place. We just had one Monday of this week, so there won't be one next week, but there will be one the following week. Those dates and the agendas are announced on our website. So you can go there, look at the district calendar and you'll find that information there. There's always a time for public comment at the school board meetings. And you all are welcome to voice your concerns and speak directly with the school board that, and I should have mentioned that they have been heavily involved in this. Those folks do so much more work than you see as they're sitting there on the dais. They come to these meetings, they challenge us as school leaders and administrators. So please know that they are heavily involved in this and they too want to hear your voice. I'm certain that, that many of them are on the call here, listening and seeing your feedback. So please know that, that they are a critical part of this and actively engaged in listening to our community. I want to turn things now back over to our Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Brandy Love Lady Mitchell, to bring this event to a close.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Without a doubt, I'm sure that we have board members on this call. The other folks and faces that you don't see but are strong in the numbers are our staff, our administrators and our classroom teachers and other professionals who make the things that happen in our schools and classrooms work every day. At one point, I think we had almost 90 individuals on our call. And I think it just speaks to the investment that we have in GRPS. We started with my story. I encourage you to think about your story in terms of how it intersects with GRPS and then to think about our story. And so in closing, what I want to do is remind us of how clear it became during COVID related to the significance of schools and everythings and all the ways in which schools help students be seen and feel whole and valued and how it creates a space of belonging and how it tees up our scholars for what's next in their life, for life, school and test. And the fact that GRPS is one of the larger employers in GRPS. Our people, staff, scholars and families deserve the best. And so please continue to stay engaged and please continue to advocate so we can reimagine, reinvest and revitalize our GRPS. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We encourage you to check out the rest of the town hall meetings and even participate in our lunch and learns. Have a great night and we'll see you in the future. Thank you.